Okay, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to... Oh, I'm actually like a minute early.
Yeah.
Two minutes.
Uh, can we have some jazz, please?
I know, this never happens.
See, who's got the voice?
And we're all up here. I'll welcome everyone, welcome everyone to our commission meeting, it's good to have you. Uh, in roughly forty seconds, I'll go ahead and get started. I don't know if there's a rule about getting started early, but I feel like there is. I feel like there is. That's right. All right. Make sure I... Oh, are we good now? Okay, thank you. According to my watch, too, so we're good. Um, so anyway, welcome to the city commission meeting. Uh, we'll go ahead and get started tonight, uh, so I'll call this meeting to order. And we always start, if this is your first time here tonight, um, we always start with a moment of silence and then pledge of allegiance, and then we'll move forward with our agenda. So if you please join me in rising for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have roll call.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. Um, so next is our first opportunity for public comment, so let me walk you through the agenda if this is your first time. Uh, so we have multiple opportunities for public comment tonight. And so the very first one on the agenda is public comment on anything that we're actually voting on tonight. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings where we discussed, uh, um, we were discussing issues and we cast votes, and you'll see a whole list of them in the agenda. And so the first opportunity for public comment is if you want to speak to one of those items. Uh, we have a couple of rules around public comment. We ask that you come up here and speak into the microphone. Um, there's a clipboard over on that table, we ask that you write your name and the city that you live in. Uh, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak, and there's a little timer right here. Uh, and for the first, uh, public comment period, we ask you to, to point out which item that you're speaking on. Um, and then we have a scheduled public hearing tonight, and that's a little bit later on the agenda. Uh, and that's a public hearing on the bicycle plan. Uh, and then after that is public comment where you can speak about anything that's on your heart or mind. And so those are the three opportunities for the community and the public to speak. So if you're here to speak on anything that we're voting on, you're welcome to come forward. Uh, again, we ask that you join us right up here and speak into the microphone so that everyone can hear you. All right, going once, going twice, all right, seeing none, Mr. Miller. Good evening. Happy Tuesday.
Good evening, fellow citizens. This is the House of the People. Watchdog Miller, reporting. Welcome to Simon Legree Square where, uh, bicycles, white elitist bicycles are welcome, but black buswheels are banned. One, two, three, four, five, and fourteen. Simon Legree Square. Uh, on the, uh, further down on the agenda, the no dollar figures, uh, B two, B four, five, six, C three, four, five, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Basic, basic philosophy here is the public's business is none of the public's business. Looks like a lowball on, uh, on C fifteen, looks like lowball bidding. D seven, the track record, Wemac's track record is racist and anti-Catholic. The two have supported in the past referendums abroad. Somebody gave him a Rosa Parks Circle, told him they could, uh, had put a beer tent in there and in exchange, Wemac endorsed the, uh, Rapid referendum, which is anti-Catholic and, and racist, where our buswheels still don't get downtown, you know? And, uh, uh, G two, welcome, sir. Uh, you are honored to attend the, uh, Michigan Municipal League Conference, uh, which is what we at the pant. Our buses don't go to, to the pant, black and Catholic. And why do you ever need an invitation? What does this mean? Is this, are you, is it a couple hundred dollars? It loo- looks like a serious euphemism, and there's, there's no explanation on, uh, uh, why. And I'm also offended by, by Michigan bureaucrats from Monroe to Muniz to Marquette are invited in to our storied pant hotel, and our black and Catholic buswheels are still banned. September twenty-seventh, why do they get in and we don't? Thank you ever so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, would anyone else like to speak on something that we're voting on tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close that opportunity for public comment, and it'll take us to our approval of our minutes, and these are minutes from our, uh, July twenty-fourth meeting. So can I get a motion? All right, commissioners, any questions, comments, additions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to petitions and communications, and we have a few of those tonight.
Yes, uh, first one is a communication received from Lionel Legrone, Jr., expressing support for Mark Washington as the city manager.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Catherine Bostic-Tullis, Michigan Municipal League President, with upcoming meeting information.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Watchdog Miller entitled Rapid Kleptocracy.
That is received and filed.
And communications, five of them, received expressing support for the draft Bicycle Action Plan.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next up will take us to report of city officers, and we have three items tonight.
Yes, the city clerk submitted the report of standing committees, which includes the mayor's appointments of Commissioner Nathaniel Moody.
That is received and filed.
Comptroller's report for the period of July eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, through August seven, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of forty-six million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, and eight hundred and eleven dollars.
And that is received and filed.
And the treasurer's report for the period of July fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, through August three, two thousand and eighteen.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next up will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda are items that we talked about earlier today in one of our meetings, and when they were voted on, they were voted on unanimously. So with one voice vote tonight, we'll adopt all of those items. So can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Support.
All right, commissioners, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to items that are off consent, and we have one item off consent, and it's off consent because it was a split vote this morning. Uh, so can I, I'll read it, it's, uh, consideration of potential community and police relations investments. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, Commissioner Kelly, you wanna tell us about this?
A lengthy discussion this morning about this item, which is a consideration of some investments around policing community relations. And we moved forward all but the first item, which, uh, was the hiring of additional, six additional officers. We wish to have a report back from the task force that each one of us around the table appointed to work with Twenty First Century's, um, community policing. And their discussions are around what the definition of, what the meaning of community policing is, and deployment. So we wanted to, uh, give them time to do that, as well as to take a deeper dive into that ourselves.
All right. Commissioners, any additional comment or questions? We've had quite a bit of discussion on top of our work session last week. All right, I'll go ahead and call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
It carries. All right, next up will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have three ordinances tonight.
Uh, ordinance number one, ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-five for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, amendment number two.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved. Support.
All right, Commissioner Ruppert, you wanna tell us about this?
Uh, there are just two things. Um, and one of them is with the police department, we are, we have a cops grant, and they just needed to adjust the, the total at the end for a few thousand dollars. And then the other is for the Golf for Kids event, which Commissioner Lanier championed. It's receiving those funds that came in from that event, which was very successful, twenty, almost twenty-seven thousand dollars.
And I have a check for a thousand in my car that I forgot to bring in, treasurer, I'm gonna bring it in before the...
Nice work on that, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome. All right, any questions or comments about that? All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I can read it, but I might miss it.
I was ready for the, I was ready for the next one. Commissioner Ruppert.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Moves.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to, uh, our second ordinance tonight.
The second one is a series ordinance for water supply system revenue improvement and refunding bonds, series two thousand and eighteen.
So moved. Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you wanna tell us about this?
Yes, Mayor, on June five, two thousand and eighteen, city commission approved the publication of a forty-five day notice of intent. The forty-five day referendum period expired on July twenty-two, two thousand and eighteen, without public comment. A series, uh, twenty-eighteen bond issue is proposed to provide up to forty-five billion dollars in bond proceeds to pay all or a portion of the cost of constructing system improvements and related components in public infrastructure directly affected by these improvements.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, commissioners, any questions about that? All right, this is also a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. It carries. All right, next up will take us to our third ordinance tonight.
An ordinance to amend the recreational fire ordinance.
Moves.
Support. All right, Commissioner O'Connor, you wanna tell us about this?
Yeah, uh, last year, we, or two years ago, actually passed a recreational, uh, fire ordinance, and, uh, it was set up for a pilot period, and, uh, this will extend it for six months so that it can work out the remainder of, uh, this summer, and then, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll get some more data on it, and we'll talk about it again, uh, this winter.
Sounds good. All right, any questions or comments, commissioners? Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, I, um, I will be voting no on this. I remain concerned about air quality in Grand Rapids, and so I recognize that there are people who suffer from asthma and other, um, lung concerns, and we had received information from, um, and our asthma organization in the Kent County Health Department that, um, was not in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you. All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Nay.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. It carries. All right, uh, commissioners, we don't have any resolutions tonight, so that will quickly take us to our public hearing tonight. Um, so we have one public hearing tonight, and that's a public hearing on our Bicycle Action Plan. And to tee this up and give us an overview is our Director of Mobile GR. Is that technically your title? Okay, sorry. Brilliant mobility guy.
Brilliant mobility guy.
So, uh, Josh Niermore, uh, has a presentation for us tonight. Um, I wanna give a shout out to, uh, Kristin Bennett, who couldn't be here tonight. I know she's put a lot of time and energy into this, uh, and so we're sorry she's not able to be here. But Josh will carry forward with the presentation, and then after the presentation, we'll open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. So I, just a brief couple slides, just to kinda give you an overview, because it is an almost three-hundred-page document, so we wanted to provide a pretty high-level summary of what, what's in there. Um, so we're really excited about this. The first thing I would say, this, this is sort of the culmination of a lot of work, mostly from Kristin Bennett, but from a lot of the team within the city, working with multiple departments. And the other thing I wanna point out is this is a really complex, uh, plan that we, we put together and really summarizes a lot of the great work, but we didn't do it with any consultant resources. So that's something that's unique to some of the, the work we've been trying to do lately. So, uh, why is a bike plan needed? We've received kind of a lot of those questions as part of this, because Vital Streets is a lot of elements and a lot of our previous work. So, uh, this was a request from the city commission, uh, as part of the GR forward planning process and as part of Vital Streets, to really look at what is it to create a comprehensive network and really, uh, look at this like we do with a lot of our other, uh, facilities, uh, throughout the, the community. There's a growing public demand for more travel options, uh, not only just driving and transit and walking, but bicycling is becoming a really, uh, a high-growth potential. Um, but we really need to look beyond being opportunistic, as we have been in the past, for how we're creating this network, and really look how we can address some of the connectivity challenges. We've been really successful in building out a lot of the network, but now we have some of those hard pieces about crossings and other things associated with that. Um, and then lastly is, uh, probably really importantly is that a lot of our existing plans focus just on facilities. They don't focus on the other E's of, of, of bicycling, which is engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, and then how are we evaluating, uh, whether we're successful or not. Um, in terms of public engagement, we're really proud of the efforts to date, um, in terms of how we tried to do something very different with this plan, and I think we're doing this with a lot of, uh, of, of planning things within the community, is we spent a lot of time doing, uh, different, uh, ways to engage, to talk about bicycling and barriers to, to biking in the community, uh, including a bunch of focus groups that were how, uh, held uh, at the end of, uh, fall of two thousand and seventeen and, uh, earlier this year. Um, we also have gone out to where the community is, at dozens and, uh, lots of community events. We found that to be a much better way, go to where people already are instead of asking them to come to us. Um, and then, uh, just recently, in spring and summer of this year, we, we debuted sort of a new online survey and an online tool, so people could comment on the various facilities throughout the community. And then we also leveraged some public input from some other, uh, planning processes, and we've had this public comment period open since, uh, the beginning of July. Um, just a high-level summary of the vision, uh, I'm not gonna read this to you, but this is sort of, uh, the, the, uh, the impetus in the document. And then we're really focused around safety, uh, having comfortable facilities, how it integrates into daily life and isn't just focused on commuter trips. Um, and then how is it, uh, how are bicycling facilities for all ages, abilities, and socioeconomic levels? Again, the, the, the goals and objectives of the plan really stem around how do, the connectivity, how do we address and fill in the gaps, uh, within the bike network? How do we ensure safety? How do we look at the comfort of the various facilities? Uh, with equity, how are we making sure that facilities are distributed, uh, equally across all three wards and throughout all of the communities based on where they have needs for different travel options the most? Uh, where do we have the most ridership growth potential? Uh, how does it, uh, address community and health impacts as well? Um, again, I'm not gonna read through all of these, um, but just summarizing a few of them, it does really spend a lot of time talking about how we can coordinate, uh, a lot of existing city efforts with how we're designing facilities, uh, and prioritizing, how we can complete a full network, addressing safety, but really talking about supportive equipment, because, uh, as a lot of the commissioners, uh, have expressed, we, you get a lot of complaints about bike parking, we don't really have a standard program for it, it comes up a lot in corridor improvement districts. So this has some recommendations about standardizing that. Um, one of the biggest pieces, and as part of the appendix, is the Bike Share Study and feasibility analysis, which, uh, has been a topic of many briefings. And so as part of the, the final culmination, the action, we'll be bringing forward some recommendations specifically related to the future of Bike Share for the commission a little bit later this fall. And then lastly, and very importantly, is how do we talk about maintenance and operations? Uh, street sweeping, snow plowing of, of the facilities. Uh, in terms of the review and timeline, um, so as I mentioned, the draft plan's been available since the beginning of July. Um, we've been receiving all of those comments and trying to respond to them, uh, and we're compiling them all together. Uh, and we'll also, uh, based on the feedback we receive at tonight's public hearing. Then on Monday is going to be the first discussion, uh, at the Vital Streets Oversight Commission, because there are a number of recommendations in the plan about making some changes to what was recommended in Vital Streets. And so as a result, you'll see that for those, uh, like the dates for adoption of the plan are yet to be determined. That's because we wanna leave time at the Vital Streets Oversight Commission for them to be able to make sure that they feel very comfortable about the recommendations that are in the plan moving forward. And so until Vital Streets has sort of, uh, signed off on those changes, we will not be bringing the, the plan forward. Um, and we've been working with, uh, uh, interim city manager DeLong on that as well. Um, and so those dates, we're hoping that it'll be sometime a little bit later this fall, as well as the Bike Share Study. So that's all I have for that, so, thank you.
All right, so first I'll, I'll turn to my colleagues, uh, to see if you have any, any questions for Josh, go ahead.
Josh, did you wanna, um, fix, excuse me, um, did you wanna share some specifics about kind of the streets that are being considered? And I think there are like three different, um, types of bike services in the community, maybe more than that, but those are, three are sticking out for me, do you wanna talk a little bit about that, or?
So the, the plan really, uh, the map that's included in the plan really starts to, uh, basically, we're trying to look at, um, the equity across the three wards, to really look at north, south, and east-west connections. And we're looking at creating separated bicycle facilities, as well as, uh, just generally to look at separating for comfort and prioritizing, instead of looking at having bike lanes on all streets. And then also, much like, um, Vital Streets kind of mentions this, but we take this to another step further, is looking at more community bikeways, which is looking at low-traffic, low-volume, local streets that don't require a lot of infrastructure. It's the greenways concept, which from where Kristin and I both spent a lot of time in our planning background, it's more popular on the west coast, and has been kind of infiltrating more into, um, into the Midwest communities over the last probably five years or so.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't have all of those details, I have the map up on my computer back there, and we can go into that.
If anyone's interested, I, I'm just thinking, you know, we've seen the plan for a few weeks now, and just thinking that if someone were interested, if they could kinda see those maps, can you send them somewhere, just in case they wanna see more detail?
Yes, so, uh, Grand RapidsMI.gov, and through our department, we actually, if you, the Bicycle Action Plan, if you type it in, you can actually comment directly on the map in an interactive nature, where you can provide feedback and comments on if we missed things, or if you have specific issues with different facilities.
Great, and then the last piece, thank you for, um, engaging with Vital Streets. I know we've heard from a number of them with their feedback regarding the plan, so to, to do your due diligence and make sure that you're taking it to multiple, um, entities to get their support, I think is wise, thanks.
Josh, I ju- I just have one kind of logistic question. So first off, the, the plan is incredibly comprehensive and thorough, so please share that feedback with Kristin. Um, but in the plan, there, there's a whole host of recommendations. I'm just curious, process-wise, what the, what the next steps would be after the plan is completed and finalized?
So the, the first piece of that will be actually, um, creating sort of a roadmap for all those different components. A big piece of that is, because we didn't have sort of resources available, we need to do some cost estimation associated with that, and a lot of that would happen with Vital Streets as part of how that's gonna relate to some of the, the, the projects that are coming in the pipeline in the years to come. But a lot of it is, um, related to each recommendation area, like around safety. We have safety grants currently right now, but what are we gonna do with those moving forward in terms of the support for driving change? Because we have some funding right now, but the funding isn't, you know, it's not in perpetuity. So if we wanna continue for bicycle safety and education, um, and, uh, city commission a few months ago approved some, uh, preliminary funding for bike education, and for doing some training so that we can host more community workshops, and having folks that speak Spanish and can teach those classes as well. So we're, we've kind of been doing some of that work, but the whole idea is post-adoption of the plane, plan would be a roadmap, that that would be part of the two thousand and twenty budget, in those specific core areas in which we don't already have resources or programs, uh, able to be able to implement those, those items.
And then, uh, oversight of the plan and implementation and progress, would that fall under Mobile GR commission?
It would fall both under Mobile GR as well as Vital Streets, because Vital Streets is where we report out regularly on the completion of the bicycle network. That's where it falls in terms of that, but the rest of the plan, like education, there's always gonna be overlap between the two groups and how they are, but overall reporting and sort of the plan would be housed within the Mobile GR commission.
Okay, thank you. Right, Commissioner Kelly, and then Commissioner Moody?
Yes, I had one, um, question that came today, because this was gonna be on tonight's agenda, and that was, I know we talked about post-education, when we really did the driving change program and finished that up, when would we begin to start doing some enforcement around bicycles who are not following the rules? Because there've been some accidents in there, and in a number of close calls. And then another one about, um, how are, where are we with the project engineer in traffic safety? Is that coming up anytime soon?
So it, it is a vacancy currently, and since our department has kind of absorbed traffic safety over the last few months, we've been doing a whole assessment of some other staffing, and we prioritized some other positions first, and we wanted to wait until we got full feedback through the Bicycle Action Plan before moving forward with posting that position, because it used to be the primary bike, uh, engineer within the, the community, and we wanted to make sure we were, uh, following that. So our goal would be, as we feel confident moving forward, we would just post that, because it has been a vacant position for a few months now.
Okay, and then the ticketing and enforcement piece?
So in terms of the enforcement, um, we are probably gonna work with that in combination with what we're doing related to pedestrian safety, because there has to be a whole education about, like crosswalk enforcement actions, because as we changed from yield to stop.
Right.
Um, I walk every day to work, and I, I'm a regular experiencer of when people don't yield or stop for a pedestrian. Um, but in, in terms of bicycling enforcement, uh, that's something that we have had conversations, we did have some grant funding preliminarily with, uh, GRPD. Um, but we could have a more robust conversation about how to be able to do that type of an enforcement program. We've, uh, been a little reticent to do it right now, just because of resources and in terms of wanting to complete the whole nature of the, the plan overall.
Right, well, thank you for your work on this, Josh, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Josh, I have a question for you. Number one, if you can repeat that website again for me, please, I'd appreciate it.
It's GrandRapidsMI.gov.
GrandRapidsMI.gov.
And, uh, in the search bar, it's just Bicycle Action Plan.
Okay. Secondly, is, uh, with this, um, Bicycle Action Plan taking place, uh, the number of bikes that are gonna be on the road, is there anything in reference when you talk about safety? Are the bikes being licensed, are people who are buying bikes, are, will they be licensed in some form or fashion?
We, we have not gone the, the route of getting to that level of a recommendation. I know a number of communities, I lived in Portland, Oregon for about eight years, and the state of Oregon actually has a, a licensing program that they just debuted fairly recently, just this last year. But that's actually, we actually just became a member of the National Association of City Transportation Officials, and that's part of the thing that's been having a conversation. So there are no recommendations in this plan to do licensing of bikes. There was some work when I was in Cleveland related to helping to track them for, for, if your bike was stolen or theft, so it had like a barcode and you could register it for a minimal fee. Um, there have been some kind of conversations with, with, with some folks about a program like that.
Yeah, the, uh, Grand Rapids Fire Department used to have a program years ago where if you purchased a bike, you had to register the bike through the fire department, they give you a license with a barcode on it. So I don't know if that's still in place or not. I'm just looking at the fact that when you're talking about, uh, the, the, the movement of cycling through the city, uh, safety, and in terms of people parking their bikes somewhere, I'm gonna look at the fact that it's a possibility that some bikes may come up missing.
That's a good point.
Yeah, it is. And I think it's actually highlighted in the report, when there, there's some great, if you haven't had a chance to read it, and I know you, you have a lot on your plate to catch up on.
Commissioner Lanier has given me a lot of homework tonight, so I've got all the packages that's deals with cycling, so I'll be reading quite extensively this week, because I, um, I've also got some, 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 some emails and some concerns about, uh, bicycling in the streets as well, and the safety rules and laws and regulations.
Yeah, so there, there were a number of surveys that were done that asked specifically about concerns, and one of them highlighted was, um, having, uh, their bicycle stolen. So it's, it's really, the feedback from the community is, is excellent.
Okay, I, I need to read that.
Yeah. All right, anything else, commissioners? All right, with that, Josh, I'll have you sit down, but maybe, uh, keep a notepad in, in case there's questions, and I'll have you come back up and answer those. Uh, so I'll officially open this public hearing, so if you're here to speak on the Bicycle Action Plan, now's an opportunity to come forward. Same rules apply, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. Pardon? Oh, and sign in, thank you, city clerk. Uh, and please sign your name onto the clipboard, either before or after you speak is fine. Yep, come on up. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is David Davis.
Hi, David.
I was born in Butterworth Hospital seventeen, or seventy-seven years ago. I was, went to South High School, served in the military. I ride my bike a lot. There are a number of hazards for bikes, and we have to do certain things to get around these hazards. And, uh, some of it is broken glass, and, uh, tree limbs that overhang the bike paths, and so forth. It's an important thing, we're having more and more bike bicyclists, as you all know. I'm very concerned about it, I didn't know about this group, because I just returned here in March. And, uh, I would like to see more done for bicycling, we all know it's a healthy thing, and, uh, even for me. And I'd like to contribute to that, and another issue is, there's a lot of trash in the areas where bikes are supposed to ride, and that makes a hazard, because either they avoid it, and that causes interference with traffic or pedestrians. Bicycling has to do with courtesy. People riding bikes have to be courteous. There are places where we do have to share the sidewalks with pedestrians. By being courteous, we announce that we are approaching them, or we stop our bikes, let them pass, and then proceed. And that's what I consider courtesy, and I'd like to encourage that with, uh, training our bicyclists on how to behave on the paths that they use to bicycle. And I'd like to get to know this gentleman that just spoke, and I would like to contribute more to that. And, uh, I hope that the commission will cooperate a lot with that. I go to, uh, Grand Valley State University, I lived on North Front Street, and it's a short ride, but then, uh, there's a number of things that I come across. There's a tunnel between Tenth, uh, on Tenth Street, uh, between, uh... There's a tunnel between Tenth, on Tenth Street, between Front Street, or Scribner and Turner. We have a lot of migrants in there and they're contributing to a lot of trash and hazards in that tunnel. And all of the machinery has been so gracious is to have their staff come out and help clean up our neighborhood. And I appreciate that, and it should be addressed in that way. And encourage for other people to help keep their areas clean for safety, walking and riding bicycles. And I hope that everybody will consider this and help make this a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And thank you for your service. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Amy Duggan. I'm a Midtown resident and I work in the East Hills Business District, so I have a very short bike commute, and I'm lucky to have that. But I want to speak on behalf of everybody who wants to be able to bike. I want to start out though by saying thank you to everyone on the Commission and the mayor for all of the work that's been done in the past ten years or so on encouraging and making biking safer in Grand Rapids. We've come a really long way, and I think this bike plan is really like the next step to make things bigger and better and get more people out and riding. So we're really excited as part of the Coalition to, to be having this bike plan, but we also had a few concerns about it and just some suggestions that we wanted to see a little bit more specific and measurable objectives in it. There's just so much information and there's a lot of great things, but finding a way to prioritize what needs to be happening first and measuring how it's happening. And like some of the things that the mayor asked about and that Josh was talking about with estimated costs and timelines for how these things are going to happen and when they're going to. So we also had a few things that we thought were things that we wanted prioritized, and we have other board members here that'll be going over some of those topics after me. The one other thing when reading through the plan is that we felt that the goal of five percent of bicycle mode share by 2035 is a little bit conservative and that we should be aiming higher, more for the 2025, which is kind of where this plan is going, and that that would put us more in line with other cities that we are, you know, similar to in a lot of ways, and that we'd like to, to achieve the level that they're reaching right now with cyclists. So that is all I have, but we have some other board members with some more information. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Amy. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Hi there, I'm Callie Crowe, and I'm a member of the Greater Grand Rapids Bicycle Coalition, and I'm, I live in Comstock Park. And I am also a LEAK certified instructor, so I'm, education and how to use bicycle, bicycle infrastructure is really, really important. I also work at Kent District Library, and as we work on the problem of third grade reading proficiency, over and over again, we come up with the fact that kids, transportation, getting them to the resources like the library to be able to participate in summer reading especially, transportation is always a roadblock. So when I was a kid, I lived in small towns in Southern Illinois, granted, but I could walk or take my bike to the library anytime. And the library's always been my happy place, and I think that it's a happy place for a lot of kids. And it would be great for them to be able to get there on their own without having to rely on vehicles or their parents to get them there. And I know there's a lot of logistical things around that issue as well, but I think that it could be a step in the right direction if we made sure that all kids knew how to ride their bikes and use the facilities safely. So part of the plan that we want to suggest is a development of a pilot program for youth bicycle education, most likely in partnership with GRPS. A pilot program would allow for future implementation of citywide bicycle education for all youth in Grand Rapids. The Driving Change Crash Evaluation Study indicated that youth education will be needed if the city is to achieve its Vision Zero goal. So getting to kids when they're young and teaching them how to use facilities correctly is so important because I personally am a bike commuter, and I currently use the White Pine Trail and the Riverside Park Protected Bike Lane, and then also the new Monroe or the new Division Street Protected Lanes. And it's amazing. And I, I love my, my bike into downtown. I don't have to park. It's really, it's just really a liberating situation. I love it. But I do see others out there coming at me from the wrong direction, and these things are what cause crashes and injuries. And that's what we want to avoid at all costs. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Thank you for an opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Bowens. I'm a family physician. I work for Mercy Health, and I've worked in several clinics in urban and suburban Grand Rapids. I've been a bike commuter for 20 years in Grand Rapids to my medical office. Before that, I've been a commuter in Detroit, Ann Arbor, Washington DC. So I love to commute because it is good for me, but I would like it to be good for other people too. Because right now it's a little bit more for bike enthusiasts. Other, regular people feel in danger. As a physician working in our communities, I see so, this huge cohort of inactive obese children who are in line to have diabetes, heart disease, hypertension, very concerned about, oh, this is going to overwhelm our success as a cool city. We all, we have this newfound prosperity and innovation, but illness and disease could overwhelm them. So my, my feeling is that part of our dedication to being prosperous and cool, cool being like we're, we know how to move forward and to grab great ideas from other places, is to transform ourselves into a more available for, for cycling. I think this could be a tremendous benefit for our community in terms of health, education, mental health. If we could allow there to be safe places for to go, either to school, to the library, to work. We could improve our, our air quality by having fewer cars on the road, and we can have more productive workers because they're energized by the time they get to work, well, less, less absenteeism. Anyway, I'm enthusiastic about supporting, moving forward on improving our bicycle facilities, and thank you for, for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. All right, others who wish to be heard? Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. I saw you riding your bike here earlier.
I was.
I saw you.
My surprise. Um, my name is Josh Duggan. I live in Midtown, and I am a board member with the Greater Grand Rapids Bicycle Coalition, and I'm the chair of our advocacy committee. And I wanted to start off by welcoming Commissioner Moody to the, to your new position. I don't envy all the reading that you have to do to get caught up, but I guess I'm here to, one of the items that I wanted to talk about today was the hiring of a project engineer in traffic safety to, to really dive into the on-the-ground implementation of, of, of items that are in the, that are in the bike plan. Not having that go-to person will make it much harder to, to really coordinate all the different departments that are involved in, in a lot of these projects. So that's the first item. The second item that we really think that will change the city is funding feasibility studies for a couple of key trail corridor gaps that exist. Imagine if you could ride your bicycle from the Grand River to Meyer Gardens in about 20 to 25 minutes along a trail. There is a rail corridor that exists, sees about 10 trains a week, and we think the Michigan Street Corridor Improvement Project Plan and the Grand Rapids Parks Plan, both, and also the M., the M. Grand Region Motorized Plan all identify this as, as a really critical corridor. And the, the other thing that it provides is there's a lot of opportunities for economic development. Once you've got that trail there, it makes, you've, you've, you've got 450 or so new apartments that are just coming online on Michigan Street. Those people all live within a five-minute walk of Highland Park. However, they can't legally walk there without going underneath the, the highway illegally next to the railroad tracks. They have to walk up the hill and back down the hill. And so providing those opportunities is really going to add value to those, those parcels. And then providing a link, a way to get to Frederick Meyer Gardens on, on a bicycle is something that really doesn't exist right now and, and would, would really be a key connection for the corridor. The other connection would be between the Oxford Street Trail and the Plaster Creek Trail on the southwest side. So, thank you. And...
Thank you. Thank you, Josh, and thanks for your advocacy. Hi.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you so much for having us this evening and for the ability to be able to talk on the subject of bikes. I work off on Plainfield for a engineering firm, and I love to ride my bike. I love to commute to ride my bike. However, the pathways going there are not, do not allow me to be able to do that. The curbs are not even ADA accessible, et cetera. We talked a lot about tonight about the whats, what we would do and what the ideas are, and part of the reason why I'm here to talk as part of the Bicycle Coalition is because it's more, a little bit more about the whys. We know that, as the doctor discussed earlier, that children are affected greatly, childhood obesity. Their grades we know increase when they're on bicycles. We know that riding bicycles helps out with our personal economics for not spending that much money on gasoline. We know that it decreases the carbon footprint and increases sustainability for our community. We know that when we ride a bike, when we go somewhere by foot, we know that local business increases. We know that traffic decreases. We know also the P-word, parking, is addressed a little bit better. And then finally, one of the most important reasons is because of equity purposes. I believe that the bike is the great equalizer of all. Those are some of the reasons as to why we might look a little bit further into this bike plan. But I would also, I'd also like to say that we know that there's a lot of people that already ride a bike. And out of the population, that's a certain percentage. It's a rather small percentage that ride regularly. And then we have a certain percentage of the population in Grand Rapids and in most cities in particular that won't ever ride a bike. They won't get on a bike. It's maybe not for them. Maybe they don't feel comfortable doing it. They probably won't. There's a great percentage of people in this city right now that are interested in riding a bike, that would actually like to ride a bike. And maybe they won't commute to work, but maybe they want to get to the farmer's market. And making those connections for those people, and the idea is, is that the main reason why they're not getting on a bike, why that large percentage of people are not commuting or are not going to the grocery store on their bike, is because they're afraid to do so. Like my commute, and I'm an avid cyclist, but my commute doesn't even allow me, as avid cyclist, to feel safe where I'm riding. We also have a couple other issues that have been happening in the community lately. We have someone here whose bicycle was just stolen in front of Founders. Lock was just broken and taken right in broad daylight. So what we need are to take away some of those reasons why we know that bicycling is good. We all know that. It addresses a million issues that everyone in this city is involved with and concerned with. It hits everybody. But then the other part of it is, is that what are the barriers for people getting on their bicycles? And the majority of the reason why is because it's safety purposes, safety reasons.
Thank you. Your time is up, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. All good points. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks again for letting us come here and talk. My name is Sharon Finkbeiner. I have been a Grand Rapids resident for about 15 years. I've lived throughout the city. Unfortunately, I moved from downtown closer to work southeast. I do commute to work. It's about a mile. I do struggle to find a way to get downtown. Aside from driving, I'm very blessed to have a vehicle, but I do find, you know, like Rhonda said, the P-word is kind of daunting. I also work for a company that advocates health, and I have many, many coworkers that are concerned about my safety, even with that little mile trek I take. It's a very busy road, 36th and East Paris. They are concerned. They always wonder like, oh, I could never ride my bike on a road. That just scares me. So I'm here to speak. It'd be wonderful to see this, get an education program going. I would also love to be an advocate of a safe and law-abiding cyclist. I would like to spread that word, put the name on the map for Grand Rapids as a wonderful cycling community. That's pretty much all I have to say. And I'd like to thank the Greater Grand Rapids Bicycle Coalition. I've made many friends throughout cycling and volunteering as well. So thanks again.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Emily Fowler, and I have a couple of thank yous for you tonight on behalf of the Coalition. First being thank you for the investment in the bike share feasibility study, and we're excited to see the implementation of that. And of course, our ask is to keep diligence in making sure that's accessible to citizens of all income levels and diverse cross-sections of the population as well as the tourism aspect. The other thank you is investment in the Grand Rapids Bike Park. I think that's a really important thing for kids that can't do that type of cycling outside of the city. So thank you for that. And I also think it's important that the bike plan include those types of, you know, mountain biking community and bike park and the parks issue, you know, recreational sort of cycling within the city limits as a part of the comprehensive plan. It's mentioned, but it's an important part too. I'm here as a cyclist, but I'm also at times a motorist and at times a pedestrian and at times ride public transportation. The things that you're doing are very important, so keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hi. Hi, my name is Elliot Rader, and I live in Midtown, and I just wanted to make a few comments around the bicycle plan. I bike to work. I, I work out by the airport and I bike to work each way, most days, which is nine miles each way. And unfortunately, some of the streets, I think someone just mentioned, East Paris, that's, some streets I have to ride on the sidewalk just because it just is not possible to ride on the road. And I think that when I look at the plan and I see the concerns that people have around safety, it's, it's very real. And I've, and I've lived in Chicago and Seattle and seen some of the, the progressive moves they've made in terms of making bike, biking safety, safer. And when that happens, I see more and more people ride, and you can, you can visi- visibly see more and more riders throughout, throughout the years as, and ridership grows. So I think if we're looking at making Grand Rapids, continuing to make Grand Rapids a, a progressive city and a world-class city, I think we really have to consider the things that are going to make biking safer, and a lot of that is in the plan. And I think that it's important that we all realize that that's, that those are the things that are going to get people on their bikes. And when people, when other people see people riding their bikes and they feel safer, that grows and grows. And I, I really am excited to see this come to fruition. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Elliot. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Courtney Harps. I'm from Wyoming. My concern is the bikes being on the sidewalk. I have a lot of health issues. I can't quite move so quick, and I don't think that's right. I understand if, if it's a child under the 12 and their family's being on the sidewalk for their children's protection. And like the doctor said, with obese children, well, doing exercises. My daughter's been overweight her whole life, and she's done a lot of exercising, and she's still overweight. You can't just pinpoint one certain issue without knowing more facts about other patients. My daughter is overweight and she's healthy, and she does exercise all the time. And she's 18 years old and healthy, and that's all that I worry about is my kids being health, healthy. Doesn't matter on their weight.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
Good evening.
Hi.
My name's Rob Dispelder. I live over on Three Mile Plainfield area. I've lived in the city. Been a homeowner for over 25 years. My family's been here since 1930-something. So we've seen beautiful things happen at Grand Rapids over the years.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, it sounds like they're having a hard time hearing you, so yeah, just speak right into the microphone. Thank you.
I have this resonance problem. So I've seen wonderful things happen and change at Grand Rapids over the years. I was an avid cyclist. I raced, and I stopped. And I stopped in Grand Rapids because it was too dangerous. And it was around the time when even bicycle clubs, when we would go out on training exercises, were getting hit by cars. were getting hit by cars, were getting food and trash thrown on us, that kind of thing. And, there was less bike paths. The paths were not in good repair, so it was very dangerous as well. So, with that being said, I want to go on about several different things. Josh versus Josh. Oh my gosh, what a comprehensive report. I couldn't, Commissioner Moody, I couldn't even read it in one sitting, so I've got to spend more time reading it. But, from what I read in that report, it has a UK comparison. I lived in the UK. I lived in Europe for six years. We can't use that as comparative information. So, I urge the Commission here to look at this information, these surveys, with the questions that the public would like to ask, but rely on you to ask. And I'll point out some other things. The survey's only based on 2,000 respondents, not the people of the city, only 2,000 respondents, or around that number. So, I say extend the survey. Find a place to put that survey in voting, or send out mailers, or these kind of things. Get more people involved and get some more opinion on it. I want to remind the Commission too, that it's only about a six-month season for cycling, so I'd like to watch what kind of money we put into this. And education and training, I found so many people using the bike lane as a turning lane, which irritates me. And cyclists using all three, four, five lanes as their zip line. So, education needs to be happening on both sides. Can we roll this into some state program? License renewals. I appreciate Commissioner Moody's commentary about licensing back in the day. That's what you had. You bought a bike, you got a license, and you had to take a class.
Thank you sir, your time is up. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
If you have additional comments, please email us or get them to us in writing.
I will be.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, others who wish to be heard?
Good evening, what's up Miller back? Some places it works, you see along Chicago's Lake Shore, that right lane maybe runs close to 25 miles. I saw when I first embarked in Europe, how people were still cycling there, but it's flat, okay? This is among America's mid-American major, mid-major cities, Grand Rapids is America's snowiest hill town and our hilliest snow town. One gentleman mentioned he wanted a bike lane, apparently on college, but if you can't, because he didn't want to walk up that hill, but if you can't walk the hill, how is he going to bike up the hill? So, some places it works, others it doesn't. Basically, we've got maybe a seven-month bicycle season here. Why all the obsession? Your other records suggest that Grand Rapids is very poor talent, and it's simply impractical to go by bike lane. We need our new city manager, every year I encourage you to get our sidewalks plowed so people can get over to the bus stops. We should have, I grew up on 12-stop-a-mile transit. The, in the past, before you, I recommended bus lanes, we're down way below two miles of bus lanes. On Michigan, the, those bus lanes were obliterated. They have, it looks like 100 miles of bike lanes in Grand Rapids, way under two miles of bus lanes, and those bus lanes are generally only 20 hours a week. So, I urge expansion on that for the benefit of the low-income majority here in Grand Rapids. And that would be, as I've said in the past, on Granville going southbound, about Hall to Clyde Park, some kind of bike lane, and maybe four hours in the afternoon. And then, northbound around Central Station, that's, you know, it's a brew pub, beer town, Founders, I mean, it's backed up there. We need a bike lane there going northbound to help move the real traffic, as long as you keep Central Station open. And, so those are two. I've also Cherry coming eastbound off the freeway ramp. Cherry needs a eastbound bus lane, all the during operating hours, all the way over to the other viaduct, which will be roughly, I guess, around Ottawa. So, put those in the past, and it's the real majority here in Coalition with the motorists, who've been backed up by these wrong-streets bike lanes. It's a possible majority. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr. Miller. Alright, anyone else who would like to be heard? Okay, Josh, anything you want to add? Any comments you heard you wanted to respond to?
So, just one that I forgot to mention that Kristin asked me to mention at the very beginning is, in terms of the 5% by 2035, Grand Rapids is currently at 1.2%. So, that would be four, more than four times what it currently is today over the next 17 years. So, I just, she meant, she asked me to mention that in the intro comment, so I apologize. So, I just wanted to clarify and respond to that one. But, other than that, it's really great feedback, and we look forward to responding to it for the final plan in the months to come.
Great. And just to reiterate and confirm, the plan is still available, people can still comment and provide that feedback through the website?
That is correct. We have it open right now through August 31st, but we'll keep it open as we continue to do that based on some feedback we get from Vital Streets on Monday.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Alright, with that, I will close that opportunity for public comment, and we will move to our regular public comment period. So, if you're here to speak about anything else that we haven't touched on tonight, you're welcome to come forward again, same rules apply. We ask that you share the name, the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. Come on up. Is it David, is that right?
Yes, once again, my name is David Davis. Grand Rapids is my hometown. I was away for a while, I come back, and I find that the city has deteriorated in many ways. One of them is the fact that there is trash every place. There are glass bottles broke on the sidewalks and in the streets, there's tin cans, there's all kinds of unmentionable things, clothes of all kinds, and there's all kinds of trash. And Oliver, like I said before, Oliver Machinery has taken upon themselves and other companies as well to help clean up their neighborhoods. I would like to see other companies do the same, clean up their neighborhoods. If I walk past a restaurant and there's a ton of trash in front of their restaurant, is that appealing to, is a place to go eat? Or a business that has trash all over in front of their business, is that a reason for a person to really want to go do business with them? It's not. It's not a reason for people to want to come and visit Grand Rapids either when they see those trash. And it's not just Grand Rapids. It's Kentwood, it's Walker, Wyoming, all over. And the vagrants are a great contributor to this fact. And I know that you've been trying to work on problems with the vagrants and stuff like that, panhandling on the streets of all different types of panhandling. And they do it often with me. Now, I'm on social security, and I'm not rich or anything like that, but these people are young enough that they should be getting jobs. And when they panhandle with me, I have no qualms about telling them, get a job. And I think that's what we have to tell these people, that Deleuze, the Maltrada Mission, and the rest of these missions, tell these people to get a job. We need their work. We need employees. And Grand Rapids can be a beautiful city. It was back in the 50s when I grew up, and we could do a lot of things. It was a safe city. Now, we even had to register bicycles. And I rode a bicycle as a teenager, and even before, actually, I was in pre-teens. And I enjoy riding bicycles, and I'll continue to do so. And I would like to continue to press this Commission and the people of the city of Grand Rapids, let's clean the city up. We don't want to live in a ghetto. If you don't want to live in a ghetto, don't make it one. This is something that has to be taken under a different action than what we have been, I guess, because it hasn't worked so far. And I find overgrowth over bike lanes and stuff like that. Glass, you try to avoid the glass, you're putting yourself in danger of getting hit by a vehicle, and trash is a bad thing. My time's up. Thank you for your consideration and time this evening. I appreciate your considering my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you Mr. Davis. Appreciate it. Alright, others who wish to be heard? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and I'm going to turn to my colleagues, and I'll start down here with Commissioner Hart.
Thanks for everybody coming out. I also am a bike rider, so I'm grateful for your support of this. I just put some brand-new Chanelly bars on my old steel Schwinn Traveler. But, I just want to make mention of, I stopped by the other way, my day job, to see the Housing Now kickoff today. We put out about 75 chairs, and there were only maybe three open when I left, so. But, that's the first of four opportunities to speak on the Housing Now initiatives, and so I encourage people to look those up and come, and it's very important that we get everybody's input.
Thank you. Thank you Commissioner. I was wondering how that was going.
Yeah, Santi.
Yeah, it was unfortunate that it coincided with the meeting.
Yeah, Santi texted me and said, it's a lively group, so.
That's what we like. Thank you.
Right.
Great. Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Madam Mayor, none at this time.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you Mayor, and thank you everybody for coming tonight, and thank you for all the work you do on the Bicycle Coalition. Really appreciate that. And Josh, again, please accept my thanks and tell Kristin thank you on behalf of all of us. I do want to mention that tomorrow night's Housing Now public input opportunity and reporting out is at the Revel Center, which is at 1535 Monroe Avenue Northwest. And I know we don't have a huge crowd here tonight, but you can certainly pass the word, and I'll put that out on Facebook as well.
Great, thank you. Good reminder. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and shared comments, and I'd like to welcome Commissioner Moody.
Thank you.
I'm calling him Pastor Commissioner now, he has kind of this dual title.
Commissioner? Commissioner Jones?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening, and that's it.
Alright, thanks. I'll add two things, and I'll see if there's any final comments from our city attorney or interim city manager. I'm going to add my thanks to the Bicycle Coalition. You've been a really strong voice in our community for a long time, and we really appreciate that. So, thank you for being partners in this important work. And then, I Reverend Pastor Moody, Commissioner Moody, I got to get used to that as well.
Commissioner Spahn.
On August 28th at 6:30, so hopefully you'll be able to come back and celebrate that with us. It is official, but this will be a little more official and ceremonial than the last time, so.
Thank you.
You are welcome. So, with that, city attorney, any comments? Alright, city manager?
Just to remind everybody that we're opening a new high school tomorrow, and that'll be really exciting downtown. So, the museum school will be open.
Sure will. City clerk, anything final?
I'm a clerk.
Alright, with that, we're adjourned. Have a good night.
I don't tie the line because they left.
Yes you did. Yes you did.